Regular meeting, so if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jenny, would you please take the roll?
Collins.
Here.
Coyle.
Here.
Eiker.
Here.
Lee. Patrice.
Here.
Yusuf Abramson. Owen.
Here. Okay. We'll go ahead and get started with 207's Best for this month, which is in the area of extracurricular activities. And we'll start with Dr. Eiker from Maine East.
Thank you very much.
Penelope, can I ask you to come forward? I'm proud to share with you Maine East 207's Best winner this month, Penelope Camilla. It is no surprise to our staff at Maine East that Penelope was winning an award of this type. She's well-known as a committed student leader that's dedicated to our school community. What's special about Penelope, however, is that it was not readily apparent which curricular extracurricular involvement earned her this honor. That's because Penelope has shared her talents with athletics, athletic training, and multiple clubs and activities over the years. She's being awarded tonight not for her extraordinary performance in one area, but rather her outstanding commitment to many areas. In talking with Penelope, it was hard to judge her favorite activity because her enthusiasm was palpable as she reflected on her high school experiences. Volleyball seemed to rise to the top, which makes sense considering she was an outstanding player for Maine East for all four years. Her passion for volleyball started at the club level, where Penelope has played competitively since she was just 12 years old. She reported loving the competition and the adrenaline rush she gets from volleyball. Penelope cited relationships, however, as the most important and memorable piece of her volleyball experiences. She has loved working with a variety of coaches and cherishes all that she's learned about herself and athletes from other schools through club and school. Ironically, it was a volleyball injury that led Penelope to discover another of her great passions, athletic training. She quickly grew interested in everything about athletic training as she healed from her injury and got to know her head trainer, Megan Lucci. Penelope credits Megan with being an awesome role model, very wise with a great personality that makes people feel at ease when they're hurt. Penelope soon realized that she would love participating in our student training program. She loved that she could learn about exercise science, the human body, and learn about other sports through training. In fact, these experiences have developed into a career pathway, and Penelope is strongly considering athletic training in her future. Our trainer, Megan, has had the chance to see Penelope excel as an athlete and a trainer. She shared that "I've had the pleasure of watching Penelope grow as an athlete and a young adult. On the outside, it's easy to see that Penelope is a dedicated and determined student athlete. She puts in consistent effort and strives to achieve her goals in the classroom and on the court. Despite being relatively quiet, Penelope is recognized as that rare leader who leads by example. Her actions speak louder than words, demonstrating qualities like perseverance, positivity, and selflessness. She improves her daily team by being the leader that fixes another's crown to make them better. She doesn't seek personal glory, but instead focuses on uplifting her teammates, making them better on and off the court. She looks out for others, welcoming everyone, and shows empathy towards those in need, creating a positive and inclusive environment." Despite facing injury, Penelope never lost motivation. She actively participated in her rehabilitation and conditioning, demonstrating resilience and commitment to her team. Even though when she couldn't play, she was the first one at practice and the last one to leave, making sure that her teammates were guided, taken care of, and improving daily. As a student athletic trainer, she was always eager to learn and improve. Whether it's in her role as a trainer or as an athlete itself, she actively seeks knowledge and asks questions to better herself and those around her. New sports medicine students would gravitate towards her warm and caring attitude, and anyone who interacted with her became a better person as a result. I know I'm lucky to have been part of her high school career, and I can't wait to see what she accomplishes in her future." Between volleyball, club volleyball, and athletic training, it's hard to believe that Penelope can ever get away from the gym. But her days are plentiful with a rigorous course schedule, and she's on track to graduate with a GPA well beyond a 4.0. Penelope loves art, singing, and time spent with her friends in school activities. She serves as a senior leader for our health and wellness courses. She's a leader in National Honor Society and has participated in our choirs, including a cappella for all four years of high school. Our staff appreciates Penelope's grace and dedication in all that she does. Mr. Dave Barrett shared, "Penelope has been serving as a senior leader in our sophomore class this year. She's been a great role model for our students and an incredible help with running the class. Penelope always has a smile and a kind word for everyone, and is always willing to go the extra step to make students feel welcomed and supported." One of Penelope's art teachers, Ms. Eisenberg, shared that "I've had the honor to be Penelope's Art III, AP Studio Art, and Independent Study Art teacher. Her drive to make unique and thoughtful work is refreshing. She uses unique materials to put together visual narratives, which are not only aesthetically pleasing, but thought-provoking and mature. Penelope is so much more than a talented artist, she's a kind and humble person. She holds a level of respect for her teachers and peers that's welcomed and reciprocated. Her intense involvement academically in an extracurriculars is balanced and finessed so that she gives her all to everything she signs up for. All in all, a truly marvelous and very deserving recipient of this prestigious honor." Ms. Kate Lee, our choir director, shared that "Penelope is a four-year choir student and has also been a part of a cappella program and V show. Although she has had many great performing opportunities in fine arts over the years, she has never been one to chase the spotlight. This is because Penelope truly understands that performing is being part of a team, and she leads through making space and lifting others up. With her heavy involvement in leadership in various extracurriculars and electives, Penelope is always on top of her communication and staying dedicated to all of her commitments. It's amazing to watch a student like Penelope who finds success in so many different areas of school outside of the classroom. We're grateful for the gifts that Penelope has shared with us at Maine East, and we wish her well on what we know will be a very bright future." Penelope, do you want to share with us who's here with you tonight?
Um, here I have my father, my mother, and my younger brother with me tonight.
Thank you all for coming. Penelope, you want to tell us a little bit about your future plans, whatever you want to share?
Um, I plan on attending a four-year college. Right now, I think it's Grand Valley State in Michigan, and I plan on majoring in exercise science, going on to that athletic training path.
Great, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Maine South, Dr. Pressler.
Hi, everybody. I'm pleased to introduce to you Megan Faye. As we go through the materials that teachers, coaches, people that work with students submit, you know, a lot of times you'll find a through thread. I think the thing that really struck me this month is I don't know if I've ever seen, it's almost like we gave everybody a template, and they sort of hit all of the same points, which you will hear without any further ado from me. So throughout her time at Maine South, Megan has demonstrated excellence on and off the basketball court. As an athlete, she possesses exceptional skills, prowess, and talent, and she exudes natural leadership. Megan consistently gives her best effort, strives for improvement, and offers unwavering support to her teammates regardless of the outcome. For two years, Megan has been the captain of the girls' varsity basketball team. She led her team in scoring and is only the fourth player in the program's history to eclipse 500 points in a single season. She was awarded the Central Suburban League Player of the Year, recognized by the Associated Press as part of an All-State Special Team, and earned a spot on the first team for the All-State Illinois Basketball Coaches Association. The first time in 11 years that the program has had this recognition. Additionally, she led the team to three Central Suburban League All-Conference recognitions. In the classroom, Megan has taken advantage of various AP classes, as in AP Bio, AP Calc, and AP Environmental Science. She's president of varsity club, a member of the Irish Club, Hawk Nation Student Council, and she's a senior PE leader. Jeff Hammond, who's the head coach of the girls' varsity team, offered this. Said, "For those who had the pleasure of seeing Megan play, they would all agree that she is an absolute joy to watch. Megan has certainly left a legacy that will never be forgotten that includes all of her excesses on the court, both for the team and for individual play. However, I believe Megan's strongest legacy is the example she sets and the way she carries herself on a daily basis. You never, ever see Megan without a smile on her face. Her positive energy and outlook on life is contagious. As a result, she has an uncanny ability to make everyone's day better when they spend time with her. For these reasons and many more, Megan Faye is certainly one of the most respected and admired athletes to walk the halls of Maine South. She makes Maine South a better place, and she is certainly one of D-27's best." Matt Reiter, our athletic director, said, "Megan exemplifies what it means to be a Hawk and a leader. There's no doubt her leadership and abilities on the basketball court make those around her better, but it's her off-the-court presence that impacts so many. Whether as the students and staff at Maine South or future Hawks in the community, her energy and passion for life are contagious to those in her presence. Megan inspires so many to approach each day with great energy and a positive attitude. Her character and leadership will continue to inspire and impact those she encounters in the years ahead. The SIU Edwards Women's Basketball Program is getting a great player, but an even better person." Tom Egan, who's been a longtime science teacher and sort of the voice of the Hawks in various athletic settings, announced a few games this last couple of years. Said, "While I only got to see Megan play three times this year, it was clear that I was watching an exceptional talent. Certainly, Megan could score and rebound, but her genuine strength is her work within the team. She's not a selfish player, and it is clear that she is about working within a team concept. On the court, she strategizes and thinks ahead about how to execute the next play as it evolves. This is a skill that is almost impossible to teach from scratch, and it is a hallmark of elite players, seeing possibilities that haven't happened yet. This is the Megan that I got to see, and I wish I'd gotten a chance to see her play more. She's a once-in-a-decade player." Katie Schroeder, who is CTE teacher and internship coordinator, said, "Megan is..." She's gotten to know Megan this semester through her internship class, where she dedicates her free time as a student intern volunteering within the Physical Education Department. She works closely with the PE teachers to support class activities, student engagement, and student learning. She's received rave reviews from the Maine South PE staff regarding her abilities and helpfulness as an intern. As a girls' basketball fan, I can speak to the player and role model Megan is on the basketball court. I have personally seen her impact our community through her leadership on the Maine South basketball team. But even more importantly, her peers and young girls and boys in our community look up to her. They see that she's not only a great athlete, but a great person. Megan shines in her role as an intern, as a young adult in Park Ridge, and as a Hawk. I have no doubt she'll work hard to find success in whatever she puts her mind to in the future." Jason Marsakano, who's sort of the full-time announcer, English teacher, said, "Megan has always displayed intelligence, kindness, enthusiasm, and a genuine personality. But what I believe truly elevates her as a student, an athlete, and a person is her ability to positively impact any environment at which she's apart. I had the privilege of serving as the announcer for the Maine South Girls' Basketball Team, and Megan's skills and passion for the game garnered respect of players, coaches, and fans. Her intense defensive abilities and her clutch offensive capabilities made my job easy, as I merely fed off of the crowd reacting to Megan. As a result, the Hawks' games were filled with an energy not often witnessed at many levels. Just as she does on the court, Megan has a noticeable positive impact on the classroom environment as well. Whether she's working in collaborative groups or engaging in whole-class instruction, Megan exhibits a vitality and spirit that benefits the entire school community." Lastly, Trevor Fritz, social science teacher, said, "Megan is an exceptional young person who brightens everyone's day. Anytime I see Megan in the always, she brings so much positivity and is always quick with a hello and a big high five. She has the unique ability to brighten an entire space with her smile and energy. I had the chance to watch her play basketball many times over the last four years, but this year in particular, Megan stood out as one of the team leaders by creating a fun, goofy, and enjoyable experience for her teammates, while still scoring 30 points on many nights. Her positive attitude and competitiveness are unmatched, and she'll be missed at Maine South." Certainly, Megan's positive impact goes beyond her talent on the basketball court, which was considerable. If you were at that last game at South, been in the spec gym a lot of times, I've never seen a spectator audience that large, and it was an amazing game with the exception of the outcome, which would have been a little different, but it was amazing. Her character, passion, and enthusiasm have set her as a true role model to others. In the fall, Megan will be continuing her basketball career at Southern Illinois University in Edwardsville. Wish her our very best, have every confidence that she's going to achieve even greater success. Congratulations, Megan. Who's here with you tonight?
My dad, my mom, and my little sister.
And what are your plans next year?
I'm going to play at Southern Illinois University at Edwardsville, and I plan on majoring in physical education.
Congratulations.
And last, but certainly not least, Maine West, Dr. McMahon.
Sure, Colin, please come on down. This is Colin Jones. And it is both a challenge and a delight for me to present Colin tonight as 207's Best for extracurriculars. It's a delight because Colin is a terrific role model. He does his best in absolutely everything, constantly thinks and talks in terms of team. It is a challenge because he is so modest. He expects no fanfare and doesn't need the spotlight in order to be dedicated and fulfilled. I tried to get him to brag, but I couldn't do it. And so while I'm determined to do it for him, I'm a little nervous that he might not enjoy it. Colin told me that after COVID, opportunities to get involved seemed endless. "You could really see how much we have," he said. "There's something for everyone. You can find your people." He highly values the relationships with both adults and peers that he forged through hard work, mutual support, and dedication. Throughout his four years at Maine West, you could find Colin working hard onstage, in the musical and in choral ears, on the court in basketball, on the field in football, on the diamond in baseball, and in the classroom, both in school and in numerous honor societies. National Honor Society, New Alpha Theta, National English Honor Society, Pi Sigma Phi, and Science National Honor Society. He's also a link crew leader, a state qualifier in DECA, which he joined this year because I guess he didn't have enough to do, and an exec board member of the principals' leadership team. Having become an expert in time management, apparently out of necessity, Colin also has terrific grades in some really hard classes. In his unassuming way, he's quietly one of the most impressive students I've known here at Maine West. Colin's modesty drove him to tell me more than once that he's never been a star. He told me all about the effort it took to learn a specific block, for example, called Fire Panther, I don't know that name, in football. That he didn't really think he'd make the team junior year in basketball, but he did. That in AP Physics, he felt like giving up so many times, but he stuck it out and felt like it was all worth it when it was done. "I've always been in the middle," he said. "I'm not a star. I've never been a day-one starter. I just wait, be ready, make the most of my chance, and then come through for the team. I'm there to step up when needed." He did acknowledge that he is a section leader in choir, but he followed up by saying, "But not a star. We put together good music as a team." I don't know if Colin realizes, but every time he tried to tell me how he's not that good, he actually highlighted the dedication, perseverance, selflessness, and determination that makes him not just good, but great. "In some things, I mess up a lot," he told me. "Putting in the work to perfect technique then succeeding feels great." In those words of Colin's own, he just told you better than I could why he's a terrific representative of Maine West. Colin's teachers and coaches had so much to say about the impact he has had upon their programs, they were thrilled to learn this recognition. Kristin Mazanowski has taught Colin in accounting and is the DECA sponsor. I taught Colin in Accounting I as a junior, and college accounting accelerated this year, and I know he participates in Athletics Theater in choir. Somehow, Colin also found the time to join DECA this year since he is interested in pursuing a career in business and wanted to apply his knowledge through DECA's academic competitions. Colin spent time on his own to take practice tests and come to after-school role-play practice. His dedication paid off as he earned a third-place medal at a regional competition for his role-play. Colin then went on to qualify and compete at state competition by working with a partner to write and present a 10-page paper. Colin has excellent time-management skills, communicates with me when he will miss class due to an extracurricular field trip, and is always responsible, getting any work he misses done in a timely manner. Colin is a very well-rounded student with a wide range of talents, and it has been a pleasure watching him grow and learn about himself through his involvement in school activities. Kristi Marshall sponsors the National English Honor Society. "I've had the pleasure of knowing Colin for the past two years in the National English Honor Society. Colin has played an active role in organizing book drives, creating the displaced public library, young adult bookshelves, as well as curating, I think, as well as being an active member at our monthly meetings. Colin is very much deserving of this award and will be missed next year." Matt Ellison, Colin's English teacher, paid him a very high compliment. "I can't say enough great things about Colin. He's confident and fearless. He is balanced and interesting, yet humble and kind. I admire him, and to be honest, I wish I was like Colin when I was his age." Jim Schiffer has perhaps spent the most time with Colin of any of our staff. "I met Colin his freshman year online in Zoom Choir, and over these past four years, it has been a pleasure to watch him grow into the young man he is today. As a student who is extremely involved in both athletics and fine arts, Colin has always demonstrated dedication to both sides of his high school career. This year, Colin served as a TA in Mixed Chorus, our beginning-level choir, a member of choral ears, our a cappella group, chamber choir, and the school musical, not to mention his athletic commitments like football and baseball. He definitely stays busy. Even the times when Colin would come to our extracurricular choir rehearsals exhausted from football practice, he always kept a positive attitude and was ready to work. Through all of these experiences, I've really enjoyed watching Colin become a leader and role model in our school, and I am so proud of him for receiving this award." George Klubczak noted Colin's wholeheartedness in his comments about the 2023 football season. "Colin Jones puts his whole heart into everything he does. He works tirelessly to be the best version of himself possible, and his work ethic put him in position to make multiple key contributions to our undefeated regular season in 2023. I am proud to call Colin an alumni of our Warrior Football Program." Finally, Mike Randazzo captured so much of who Colin is when describing his contributions to the baseball team. "Colin has been a part of the baseball program for four years now. He has never been a full-time starter on any of the baseball teams, and even when his playing time was limited, he never complained once. The coaches have asked him to play infield, outfield, and catcher. Then we asked him to focus on being only a pitcher. Now we are asking him to be only a hitter. During all these changes, Colin has been willing to be our bullpen catcher when absolutely no one else would take on that role. His commitment and dedication to being the best teammate possible is clear to everyone who knows him. He does all this while also juggling many other extracurricular activities and his schoolwork. He's very deserving of this award. My own work with Colin on the principal leadership team exec board has given me firsthand knowledge of just how true these comments from teachers and coaches really are. Colin is a thoroughly worthy exemplar of a Maine West Warrior, and we've been lucky to have him with us the last four years."
Colin, can you introduce who's here with you tonight?
So I have my sister Avery, my mom, and then my grandpa.
And talk about your plans for next year, to the extent you know of them.
Don't know where I'm going yet, but I'm going to a four-year university probably in either majoring in business or sports management.
And how was the baseball trip?
It was really fun.
When did you get back?
Saturday, yeah.
Just in time to get out of your homework, huh?
Well, congratulations to our wonderful students for your achievements. I also want to just make a note that it's really interesting to watch. I've been on the board for over 10 years, and I always watch the faces of the students. And what their teachers say about them and their coaches and others has such an impact, and you can really see that. So thank you for reading all those, and thank you to the teachers for doing that. And I hope you students will do the same for someone in your future someday. So thank you. This is your opportunity to go out and have a photo taken with your principals, and you're welcome to join the meeting again, but we don't expect you to. Much fun as we have. I do not believe we have any public comments. So we'll go ahead and move on to updates from Superintendent Ken. Nothing? Okay. Are there any updates from board members today? Okay. Then we will go ahead and move on to the finance committee update, which this month will be done by Member Patrice, because Member Coyle was not in attendance.
Thank you. So we had a pretty busy meeting. We talked about the Maine East and Maine West yearbooks, which have been experiencing declining sales over the past several years, which has forced prices up. Maine South's yearbook has had strong sales and signed contracts for the 2024-25 year. The district is proposing to enter into a one-year contract this year for East and West, making all yearbook contracts up for renewal at the end of the 24-25 school year. So during next school year, the district will work on an RFP providing a standardized cost while allowing a unique yearbook for each school. We also talked about the capital outlay, where Mary Calu ran through each school's list of capital outlay items. Last year, each school was allotted $50,000 in planned identified items approved prior to the start of the school year and an additional $50,000 to spend on items identified during the year, including a variety of athletic and fitness equipment items for fine arts and cabinets and storage for the pre-school program. Frost Transition received $10,000 in planned capital outlay items, which included some fitness equipment for Frost and office furniture for Transition. We also talked about the backup internet contract. The district is requesting to enter into a three-year contract with Comcast Business to replace Windstream Enterprises as a backup provider in the event the primary internet provider fails. The high-speed enhanced bandwidth ensures reliability and redundancy at a cost of $2,000 per month and a savings of $5,400 per month over our current secondary provider. School fees for 2024 and '25. The district is proposing no change in cost for school resource fees for '24 and '25, with the exception of the yearbook and dual-credit course fees. Dual-credit courses are not free of charge for students on fee waivers, but most are with Open College at a cost of $25. Financial assistance is offered to students on waivers, reducing the cost to $15 for dual-credit courses at Open. As a reminder, there's no cost to students to participate in school clubs. A few more things here. We also talked about the BSN agreement at Maine East and Maine West, where Maine East and Maine West entered into an agreement five years ago with BSN, with each school receiving annual rebates of $3,000 to $5,000. The money is spent on coaching apparel, clinics, and other athletic costs. The district would like to enter into a five-year agreement with renewal with BSN. Either party can cancel at any time. And last, we talked about the Maxim contract. The district continues with Maxim for individual nurses and teacher assistance for specialized student needs, for which we do not have the staff to service or are unable to fill. The updated contract has been thoroughly reviewed by our attorney.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to Buildings and Grounds. Thank you, Colin.
Meeting for Buildings and Grounds was held on March 18, 2024. Members present were myself and Jen Lee. The meeting was called to order at 5:37 PM. There were no public comments. First item on the agenda was Frost Academy Administration Center parking lot replacement. The Director of Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Dayvall, ran through the bids for the summer project. The Frost Academy Administration Center parking lot will be recreated and replaced this summer, and three parking spots will be added. Four bids were received with manageable paving, as the low bidder earned the amount of $190,000. The bid was scope-reviewed and comes in well under the budget of $375,000. Second item on the agenda was Maine West ejector pump replacement. During a sewer pipe maintenance check, it was discovered that one of the ejector pumps failed at West. Bids were advertised in February, and a pre-bid meeting was held on March 5. Four bids were submitted and scope-reviewed. DeFranco Plumbing was the low bidder at $45,900. The district has done a lot of business with them and have been pleased. Third item on the agenda was district site improvement, seal coating, and striping. As part of the routine maintenance every couple of years, all parking lots are seal-coated and striped. Following advertisement and a pre-bid meeting, three bids were opened and scope-reviewed on February 28. Patriot Paving is a local company and came in as the lowest bidder in the amount of $167,634.2. Next item on the agenda was district site improvement in concrete and paving. Included in our 2024 summer projects, areas needing asphalt and concrete repairs were identified in each of the schools. Maine East will have the front garage repaved and assorted sidewalk squares replaced. South will have the north side auditorium retaining wall removed and the area regraded for drainage. West will replace the sidewalk areas. Bids were advertised, a pre-bid meeting was held, and seven bids were opened and scope-reviewed on February 28. The low bidder is Abbey Paving in the amount of $257,100. They are a great company and have done a lot of work for the district. All contracts will come for approval at the April 1, 2024, tonight actually. So be no further business. The meeting was adjourned at 5:14 PM.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to monkey status and finances. In your board packet is the January financial report. If you look at the overall revenue and expenditures, they are within If you look at the overall revenue and expenditures, they are within budget. On the revenue side, you can see the percentage is slightly elevated as compared to some prior years, but that is really the tax collections, and that will even out as the year continues. And then on the expenditure side, we're within budget. Again, you look at funds like capital projects and fire prevention, health, life, safety, and their percentage is really about timings, because a lot of the work is done in the summer. So we might be able to get a little bit more work done in June as opposed to July and August for the summer. So between those two years, you'll see an evening of those expenditures. I'll entertain any questions that anybody has on the February financial report. Okay. Very none. Thank you very much, Mary. Moving along to instructional services. Is there a report? No report. Ken, monthly update on by foyer requests.
So eight this month, and they've been responded to, or they're processed and responded to.
Okay, thank you. And could I have a motion on the consent agenda, items seven, A through, the end is here, A through G?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Ginny, would you take the role? Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Okay. Could I have a motion on the approval of Board of Education policies, eight, A and B?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. The first policy is the investment policy. This is the Township Treasurer's policy. It is updated for two minor areas. They added two entities included that they provide investment services for, and the other is an update to the entity where they get their financial banking condition reports from, and that is in five B. Other than that, their investment policy has stayed the same. We always adopt the Township Treasurer's investment policy, because since they're in charge of investing, we don't want to have a conflict between the two policies, because this is the policy that our investments will be invested under.
Did you want to go to the other one?
Sure. The other one is the purchasing in contracts policy. The only update is that the state law changed after many, many, many years and up the bidding threshold to $35,000. So we are recommending changing to the state-approved level $35,000 for bidding.
Okay. Are there any questions on either of these? No? Okay. Thank you, Mary. Ginny, would you take the role? Coyle?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on items nine, A through C?
So moved.
Second.
I just put these together, because they're all paving, so.
Yes, and all three of them have in common is that these were on the capital projects list that was approved by the board in November. This is kind of our annual paving, parking lot replacement, asphalt, concrete. We kind of put a lot of that on hold during the major construction, because we didn't want to do improvements to a parking lot that we were dragging heavy equipment over. So now we're paying a little bit of catch-up on those three. All of them came in under budget and are set to go for this summer.
Any questions? This was also discussed at finance.
Yes, at Buildings and Grounds.
I'm sorry, Buildings and Grounds. Okay. If there's no questions, would you take the role on nine, A through C? Patrice?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item nine, E? This is the ejector pump.
So moved.
So this was a bit of a surprise, as indicated in the report out for Buildings and Grounds. The pump for the ejector pit was determined to have failed during a maintenance, and they couldn't figure out why the pit was filling, so they eventually got a crane and lifted the ejector pump, which is several thousand pounds, and found that that pump had failed. So they sought quotes. Those quotes were above the bid threshold and then went out to bid. DeFranco Plumbing has done a lot of plumbing work with the district. They are kind of our go-to plumbing company for when we have to do an emergency water main break, so we are confident that they can do this work.
Any questions? Okay. Ginny? Iker?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item nine, E? This is the Maxim healthcare standard services.
So moved.
Okay. Second.
Okay, so Maxim has provided for us since 2017, '18, services for hard-to-fill positions as well as those that we just have been unable to fill. Typically, it's nursing and our teaching assistant or behavior tech positions, and so we've had a lot of success in using them over the last several years, and so we were due for contract renewal. So we were just asking the board to approve the continuation of the Maxim contract. I know this was reported out as a finance committee. So I will entertain any questions that anyone has on Maxim.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
That nursing position, is that a, in the specialized area, or is that in the office, in the opposite area?
So it's for students, it's for students who have IEPs that require a nurse. So it is specifically for fulfilling individual nursing.
So individual?
Not the office, per an IEP.
And it's for the individual, and they're individual nurses and the ones that are, that's why it's, the amount is so high?
Correct. It is providing individual specialized care for students that require it, based on their medical needs yet. So it's not yet, it's not the.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, would you take the role? Coyle?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item nine, F? This is the secondary internet service.
So moved.
This is a new contract that replaces our secondary, so this is the backup internet connection that the district has to ensure that should one provider go down, that we have redundancy in a second provider and not lose our connection. Two major changes is, one is the type of service that we're getting. The technology for it has increased, and now we are doing a multi-protocol label switching, which is just a fancy, fancy word for high-speed internet connection. So the other change is that we currently have connections that are hardwired into each of the three schools. We are moving into one hardwired connection at Maine South that after it enters Maine South into the server room, will get distributed over our network system. With the upgrading of the switches that we just did and servers, we're, we can accommodate this now, and that is part of what is driving the savings of this. We will also bring it in a different location than our primary internet service at South. So should there be, you know, should we be digging a hole for, let's say, a water main break and hit the wiring for one internet connection, it will be in a separate area of the building, so we wouldn't even lose internet that way.
You have to be a bad situation.
We have to be really, really bad.
Okay. Any, any questions on this? This is just a good all-around.
Yeah.
Okay. Ginny? Iker?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item nine, G? BSN sports contract.
So moved.
This is a rebate program for Maine East and Maine West through BSN. They entered their first rebate program five years ago. They have been receiving between $3,000 and $5,000 per year, so they wish to extend this rebate program. Maine South doesn't enter into an exclusive buy, because from time to time, Maine South gets some sponsorship primarily from Nike, where they get more product than the $3,000 to $5,000. So if they had entered this rebate program, it would exclude them from being able to enter into those agreements.
Okay, any questions on this? All right, Ginny, would you take the role? Patrice?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item nine, H, one and two?
So moved.
This is the yearbooks for East and West.
Yes, so, East and West, we are recommending a one-year contract renewal that will allow all three schools to get the same end date for their yearbook, and as indicated in the report out from finance, then it is our goal to do an RFP and select one provider across the three schools to kind of get some economy of scales, so that we can hopefully get a lower yearbook price for Maine East and Maine West.
Did you say an end date?
An end date. So Maine South currently is under a three-year contract.
Oh, on a contract, right, okay. It's not like they're all going to get the yearbook at the same time.
No.
That's one of the issues.
That is one of the issues. That's two of the schools provide the yearbook after the end of the school year, which is probably a disincentive for students to purchase them.
Okay. Any questions or, okay, would you take the role? Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item 10? This is the school fees for '24, '25 school year.
So moved.
There are only minor changes. The cost of the lock went up slightly, our dual credit courses, we have a broader range now, because we just entered into one with Lake Forest College. So we changed that, the Maine West yearbook price increased to $55 for that third year, and then the price escalation for reduced breakfast and reduced lunch. Other than that, we have tried very, very hard to keep all of the fees the same.
On the high end of the dual credit, you said it was Lake Forest. I, I was at the meeting, but I don't remember what you said. What, what is kind of the average? I know that.
I think they're at $350 with Lake Forest.
I think they're at three. We went with $350 in case we had entered one.
With them, though.
Yeah.
I'm kind of asking.
So the vast majority are with Oakden?
And they're $25.
Right.
$25.
Right, right. Okay. What other schools do we have agreements with?
We have math course with Eastern. We have, I think, three courses with Illinois Institute of Technology now.
And the range on those, just, I don't need to know all of them, but are they somewhere in between that?
Yeah, I mean, like, the Eastern course keeps it at the cost of whatever the AP exam is, so that's like a $96 course. I would think the IIT courses are like $115. They're not overly expensive for a three-credit course.
The $350 is a real outlier on this.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Any, any other questions on the fees? Thank you for your work, keeping them where they're at. Okay. Ginny, would you take the role? Patrice?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on items 12, A and B? This is intergovernmental agreements for data sharing. Oh, sorry. Oh, gosh. Okay, could I have a motion on item 11? This is for capital outlay.
So moved.
Second. There are two reports in here. One is on the about $50,000 in pre-approved capital outlay, and that would be for next year. And then, as we discussed last year, the second report is how they spent the $50,000 for the '23, '24 school year, which is kind of the, not reapproved, but kind of needed as they go throughout the year. And as I indicated at the finance committee, they often wait till the spring to spend on the balance of that money to make sure things haven't broken. So they have a list of needs, they want to make sure they can get through the school without having to replace items that break, and then they kind of accelerate some of the stuff that they wanted to do as a building. I would say that branding and signage has been kind of a theme for some of the capital outlay as construction is over, and they kind of just want to revamp the school and make it a more welcoming place.
Question, where it says each school would receive the remaining $50,000 in the budget to spend, would that be $10,000, though, for Frost?
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, would you take the role on item 11? Collins?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Now could I have a motion on items 12, A and B? The intergovernmental agreements for data sharing.
So moved.
Okay.
So these are agreements that are largely based off of the agreement we did with District 63 that we adopted last year. They update our agreements and sort of modernize the process. The last one we had was dated back to like 2003, and it made us the custodians of records from the elementary, which we do not want to do. And actually, in practice, we haven't done it for the most part for a long, long time. So these look just very similar to the ones we passed with 63 last year. It just allows us to both get data from our incoming eighth graders for making sure that we can meet their needs. If they've got something in MTSS or anything like that, we can continue synchronously meeting those needs. Similarly, if the elementary districts want to take a look forward at their students, how they're doing with us, this provides the mechanism under the law to be able to do that.
Ken, I think you answered my question, but do we have similar agreements with all of our feeder districts?
We're waiting on 62. I hope to have 62 next month in May. So this, now we have 63, this is 64, '79, which is Bennoir, 62 is next month, '25, which is River Trails, that's to be determined. But 62, they're working, they have a draft right now, I just have to see. And I expect to hopefully have that through the board in May.
And just like, just as a refresher on, bigger picture on this, is that what we're trying to achieve here, we, these agreements have improved what was done in the past to make sure that, you know, we're meshing together.
And in particular, and a lot of credit to Katie, Sean, Kelly Morrissey contributed to this, what we're really trying to do is not just academic, the academic piece of it, but really the MTSS, if the students got any kind of supports in place that have been successful at the elementary level, we want to make sure that we are informed and can continue those without having to discover six months into a student's career that, you know, there's an issue that was being addressed at the elementary district that we aren't addressing. So it just helps us, you know, it's what happens in K-12 districts, so just better communication about our incoming students, so that we can serve them better.
Anything anyone else wants to add to that? Okay. We'll wait for the next one, then.
Yeah.
Okay. Ginny, would you take the role? Iker?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item 13? This is textbook adoptions.
So moved.
Second.
So these were presented at our last board meeting. These are new selections for our English courses, and so I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on those topics.
Any questions on this? Okay, this is the second look over. We've added this. Okay. Ginny, would you take the role? Iker?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item 15? This is a facility fee waiver at Maine West. Oh my gosh, I'm crossing them off before I do them. Sorry. Okay, could I? You really want to go faster.
Game's on.
No, that would be him. Could I have a motion on item 14, the approval of the e-Learning Day program?
So moved.
Okay. Sean?
I outlined most of it during the hearing, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have related to.
I think a question I would have, you know, back in January, when we had that winter storm that knocked out power, so our e-Learning Day, we just ended up having to cancel. I mean, has there been any thought given to like assessing the risk of power outage just prior to instituting a e-Learning Day and just calling it off?
It's timing. Everything's timing with that. And, and unfortunately, that didn't really start rolling until the morning when we got better information. If we knew that the night before that there were power, widespread power outages, we could make a call that before. With weather, it's just all timing. And, and we're going to go if we can go, generally. And it just, that was just an anomalous day where, you know, all of a sudden, we had widespread internet outage, and as 8 o'clock came, and 9 o'clock came, and 10 o'clock came, we became more aware of it. But you're just, you're getting patchy information that morning.
Right.
We are, however, evaluating that day to make sure that, because we did have the opportunity to then do that the day after, following Tuesday. So we continue to monitor that and have some conversation with teachers and kids and staff about how did it go, what was the value of it. As we know, a lot of our families have very different competing interests on days like that, so.
Okay, anything else on that? All right. Ginny, would you take the role on item 14? Patrice?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item 15, the facility fee waiver at Maine West?
So moved.
Okay.
I mean, I'd rather be helping out the White Sox. I'm sure George is with me on that. This is about the Cubs, so, you know.
We'll give them a fee waiver. I'm dragging that one a little longer. Okay. And I do see that there is a donation of $4,500 here, so.
It's worth doing.
Okay. Ginny? Iker?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Okay, just to note the calendar items here, there is a committee of the whole meeting on April 15. So let Ginny know. It's basically three of our committees are, we're already planning to meet on that day, so we're just going to make it a committee of the whole meeting.
Oh.
Okay. Are there any other communications or public comments? All right. Could I have a motion to go into closed session for purposes of student personnel, review of closed session minutes, and probable imminent or pending litigation?
So moved.
Ginny? Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Okay, we're in closed session.